I thought Erica was in Washington DC.
For biliter, I actually just bookmarks of help.
Jason's right, he didn't fire anybody. He fired one or same.
So yeah, that's it's an option.
She locked it down, she had not moved out of her house.
Yeah, when you're logged in, I feel like there's too much going.
Yeah, yeah, and I tried to ask.
I mean, I worked as Amanda, but then like.
All the. Those top it, I used to have one.
That could be the same.
I grew up in that one. Good story.
Okay, well, it's six o'clock, let's get started. Welcome to the work session, everybody, I might give a quick update about the town manager's search process so that I don't forget later in the meeting. Eric and I met late last week, I guess that was Thursday, with Lauren and Patrick online and put together a little bit of a process, we'll give a more thorough update next meeting, but essentially we've received recommended firms to conduct a search from Colorado Municipal League, as well as from individuals, you know, staff members contacts. And Erica and I looked through those, there were six potential firms, two of them didn't seem to really have much experience in this specific thing, they did more HR consulting and stuff like that. Four of them have a lot of experience with executive leadership placement and in our region, so I just sent a kind of informal request for information rather than a really formal request for proposals, because this way we don't have to be bound by really strict dates and process. And just send it to the fore and said, here's what we're looking for, if you'd like to send us information about your process and pricing and you know, essentially apply for the opportunity, send it to us by late next week, and I gave him a date, I think Thursday. And then Erica and I will narrow those down to probably two or three, and we're thinking that we'll have a special meeting with this whole board to interview those groups. And this is again, just to select the firm that will then help us select the managers, so we don't want to drag this part out too far. But we do want to make sure that the whole board is comfortable with whoever we select to guide us through this process, because we're gonna, we're gonna get to know them real well, and we're gonna need to trust their work. So I'd say pencil in a March 4th special meeting. You can participate remotely if you need to, I would imagine that probably all of the candidates will participate remotely, I think it'll be about an hour long. And that's, those are kind of our next steps. Any questions or comments on any of that? Okay, great. With that then, let's dive right on into the meeting, so we have three items on our work session agenda this evening. First is a path to net zero discussion and goals, so Aaron, if you want to go ahead and join us, and I see members of Clear and other affiliated folks out there, hi Catherine, nice to see you all. And you can join in the discussion whenever it feels appropriate, and Jeff Dickinson is online, thanks for being on there Jeff. So this is kind of our big item, we've allocated about an hour to this, and then we'll talk about a couple of smaller things that came up really in our budget discussions, one is the bag fee funds and how we want to potentially use some of the fund balance that's in that fund to accomplish the goals that they were set out for, and then the other one is a discussion of the community grant program, because every year when we get to that, we say, why do we do it this way? And so that'll, that'll be a good discussion as well. So with that, let's, let's talk about the path to net zero, in my mind, and I'd love to just clarify, like, what do we want to get out of the next hour? We have time potentially on next week's agenda to continue a building code update discussion, and then a few weeks out in March to actually look at potential adoption of updated building codes, so we've kind of breaking this into chunks. In my mind, the main question after speaking with Aaron tonight, and please add to this Aaron and other board members and staff, but the main question really is how strictly do we want to adhere to the path to net zero that the town adopted a few years ago as we look at updating the energy code and the other building codes versus how much do we want to look at trying to stick with the codes as they're written and make as few modifications as possible, I feel like that's the kind of central crux issue here that Aaron needs feedback on, because he's spending a lot of time trying to modify the codes to meet our path to net zero. And then when we've talked about it, it's like, well, did we really know exactly what we were talking about on that path to net zero, so I think that's really worth revisiting, but I'd just like to clarify, is there anything else that we want to make sure we get out of this discussion before we dive in and hear from Aaron and go back and forth and hear all the history and all that? But anything else people want to make sure you get out of this discussion from board members? Is there anything else? I think kind of an updated definition and an understanding of what net zero means, and I think Aaron's got some comments on that in his memo, which I appreciated, and there's that Eagle and Picken County Regional Net Zero Roadmap that hopefully everybody had a chance to look at. Because that's been a little bit of a shifting target as well, I think what we mean by net zero. Aaron, is there anything else you want to make sure that you get from us tonight, other than kind of how, how much to stick to the path versus stick to the codes?
I think the only other item that really stands out to me is how we what the ultimate goals as far as natural gas usage are going to be. Because that's a big part of what caused those amendments as well, so trying to get a little better handle on what the final, you know, what are the full expectations here?
Okay. Okay, great, well with that, you can kick us off, Aaron, I really appreciated the very detailed memo that you gave us, I think you said a lot in two pages there.
Oh, I could have said so much more.
Yeah. But yeah, why don't you kind of set the stage for us?
Well, I think it started within, in the memo really that for me, net zero is defined as a building that produces as much energy as it uses, so whenever I hear that term, that's the first thing that comes to mind. And so, but really in the talks about these paths to net zero, it's more I guess it'd be more in line with the greening of the electrical grid is the ultimate goal, so if we have 100% grid, that's green energy then, and everything were to be running on that by default, we're considering that to be net zero as well. There's just some things that I think about when we try and particularly the existing building stock is really the, the difficult end of this. Very, I feel like it's very hard to achieve a full level of that, I think there's lots of room for improvement within the building stock. But it, to rush through it is also difficult. The codes do have manners in which we address efficiency in the buildings, particularly in existing buildings, so anytime we're doing a remodel or addition or renovation, we are slowly making improvements to those buildings as well. And so in that regard, feel like that's what usually would get, so going in beyond that can be a lot more difficult and burdensome on the owners of the existing buildings. And it's much easier to achieve high levels of energy efficiency in a, in a new building than it is to get that same level of efficiency out of an old building. And that really summarizes what I feel like we're here to talk about.
Okay. I mean, I wonder if a good next thing for us to do then, I don't know exactly the best way to do this, whether, do other people have presentations they want to share, or is this just sort of discussion Jeff does? Okay. If anybody has a question for Aaron, feel free to ask it now, otherwise maybe we'll go forward with Jeff's presentation, and then I feel like we'll just kind of talk about these one at a time, I'm thinking we might need to start with what's our definition of net zero? Construction, I like the fact that the the Eagle Picken Regional Net Zero Roadmap Draft 2, that last document in the packet, it has on page three six bullet point definition that might be a starting point. But any questions for Aaron before we just keep hearing from folks and then we'll talk about these one at a time? Okay. Jeff, you want to share some thoughts with us? We're not hearing you yet, but I think.
Are you task, talking to me?
There we go, yep.
Okay, sorry, I didn't know, I missed the pass off.
Yeah, do you, do you want to go ahead, do you want to share your presentation or just talk us through any of that as we start to, start to get into the discussion?
Basically, the presentation which I put in the packet, which you all saw, I can go through that, I mean, it really just talks about the history of how we got to this point and talks a little bit, it's more focused on new construction and how we are phasing that in, you know, in our path to net zero on the three-year increment cycle, so let me just go through that and I can kind of breeze through it since I'm sure you all have seen it. Feel free to interrupt with that. Anytime. How's that sound?
Sure.
Good. Where is that?
Maybe while Jeff's bringing that up, Aaron, can you just give us a little bit of a sense of what you've been faced with as you've been trying to update these codes, but also adhere to the path to net zero and also incorporate kind of the existing things that were in Carbondale's energy codes and other codes?
Well, you know in, by and large, the majority of the codes were pretty, pretty fair to get through. We did add a few other things, I'm working on some of that, kind of simplify some of those processes, but so really the challenges came when I got more into the energy code, along with trying to address maybe the residential efficiency building program and kind of simplify that with, with, by bringing some provisions from that code into the energy code, also looking at maybe doing something similar with the green code. Those additional what is the term, stretch code is what that would be. Those codes obviously can add a lot more cost to the project and make it a lot more challenging for both the builder and the building department to work our way through, so that was the original drive to sort of simplify the R E B P process. And then, in addition to then adding the net zero process, which the very first time I got introduced to this is, was a big surprise to me as well, like, okay, we're, how are we going to get this into here, and they made a few challenges for it, and I think it just kind of, it was surprising once you put the whole package together to really think back and kind of put it all together, what's that really going to mean to building here? And so that's where I think we just wanted to make sure we're really addressing the goals and the ideals that we're trying to get here.
Okay, thanks.
Should I go ahead?
Chris just has a quick question.
One quick question. In terms of like multifamily housing, does that go under the commercial code, or is that a?
Depends on what type of multifamily, so there's, you can get into multifamily that will be regulated by the building code, and you'll get into multifamilies that are regulated by the residential code.
Okay, and as far as these tiers, this, that, how does that work if you have, say, a building that overall is 30,000 square feet but is six units or whatever?
So it really is going to be based on the types of buildings, so like a large townhouse is going to be regulated under the residential code, and so that, those tiers come into play. A large apartment building is, starts off in the IVC, and then there it kind of jumps back and forth into certain residential provisions of the energy codes and there's a lot of movement within those.
Jeff, you can go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Chris. So basically. Yeah, really, any questions? You know, this all started with, you know, the climate crisis, and I don't need to go into that, but you know, Carbondale's always been a leader in acknowledging that that there's something going on in the climate and, and committing to reducing emissions from building energy use, so there's a climate plan, and we've taken those leadership roles for years, really since the late 90s, we started looking into you know, the impacts buildings have on energy use and carbon emissions. So we have the town goals, reducing emissions, you know, below 2009 levels by 50% by 2030 and 100% by 2050. Now, the reason we created that roadmap, well, I can't call it the roadmap, because it confuses people, I guess, but the path to net zero that we've created is to, how are we going to get there, we've got a 2030 goal, we really need to start moving toward it, so it was just a step-by-step kind of guideline, hey, we got to start thinking about this sort of thing. So basically, the Carbondale path to net zero, it really focuses on renewables, electrification and efficiency. And as has been pointed out, a lot of the definitions vary, they're all over the place, there's dozens of definitions on what, what net zero is, and we could spend time talking about that as we have in the past. But part of it is, the easy part, as Aaron pointed out again, is new construction, that's easy, it's how do we address existing buildings? So we kind of have a gentle path to get there that I think just needs some clarification. This is the definition that we've been talking about, you know, a building that produces as much energy as it consumes, right? So that's the basic definition. But then through working with that regional roadmap to net zero group, we've come up with the attributes, that it's powered by electricity, it uses renewable energy from the grid or onsite, and we can spend time talking about that as we have in the past. Probably can store energy, probably has battery backup to deal with some of the peaks. And is, is basically an energy model, it performs better than most buildings, you know, as far as energy performance, meaning the building envelope. You know, ultimately designing it so that it minimizes embodied carbon and also is electric vehicle ready, so strict definition, yes, but there's some attributes, and these, this is the goal, right? This is where we're headed, it's not where we're saying we need to be this year. So that's why we've kind of added these attributes to that definition.
Jeff, can we pause there for just a second, because I do think that's important, that as we talk about net zero, we have some shared understanding, and I see those as pretty different, that the definition is produces as much energy as it consumes versus those attributes, because the attributes seem to allow for off-site generation, and as the grid gets greener, I think it, when I think of net zero, I think more of a carbon low-carbon footprint, net zero not producing carbon emissions, you know, pollution footprint in its operation, ideally in its construction either, so it talks about embodied to minimize, or minimize embodied carbon. So I, in my thinking over the last few years, as we've talked about this, I've shifted away from really worrying much about onsite electric generation and requiring onsite renewables as we've moved toward a greener grid. And I'd love to hear what others in this group and others, there's a lot of talking going on out there, so I must be saying something controversial. But other thoughts on what definition we want to kind of ground ourselves in?
It says it's on. Jeff, there's been a shift. Yeah. So this is Heidi, I just, Lauren invited me to come sit up at the table, and I just, Ben is making a good point that initially.
Hold on, Heidi, can you say who you're with?
With Clear, I'm sorry, Heidi, Building Specialists with Clear and Garfield Clean Energy. I just moved up here just because, to acknowledge this difference and this simple definition. Jeff is correct that there are, many people have many different opinions about what should be included in a net zero home. My understanding, the conversations that Aaron and I have had, and conversations that I've been involved in at Clear revolving around the town's process and their path to net zero, has really been the simpler definition of a building that produces as much energy as it uses. The onsite piece has been flexible as we've had this conversation about the grid that Aaron spoke to, I kind of acknowledged that there's Jeff has included some stuff here in his presentation that comes from this regional process that could look very scary when you start talking about adding even more to something that's already a big step, so up to this point, that path to net zero for the town of Carbondale has not, we've never discussed requirements for battery storage. Any sort of carbon modeling or measuring of materials used or requiring folks to build above or renovate above the energy code. And I don't remember, I'm sorry that I can't speak more concretely to that EV ready part, so I, I'm acknowledging the reason that Jeff chose to include this, but I am also acknowledging what Ben and what Aaron have said, that that definition isn't what we had talked about in the past, there's more to it.
But, I mean, it's interesting, this is very detailed, but like, looking in the actual document from the regional group, it doesn't include the first bullet point there, it doesn't say it produces as much energy as it consumes, and I think that's a pretty important distinction, because if we say we've got a path to net zero, then we've got to have a path for everybody having enough renewable energy generation on their property to cover what they consume, and I don't think that's realistic, and I don't think that that should be our goal, I think our goal should be electrification and efficiency and continuing to advocate at the state level as Erica does for us on the Colorado Communities for Climate Action toward that, those renewable energy goals. But that, the definition has an impact on, when Aaron's working on the code, do we require onsite generation, and I've shifted away from that, as we've talked about this over the years, as the grid has gotten greener. So I just want to pause there, like, I think it's, this is not all the same, and on one, in one way, yeah, the, the first definition is the simpler one, and the next one has more to it, but I almost want to, you know, cherry pick a few of those attributes and say it's powered by electricity, uses renewables from the grid and/or onsite, that's fine. I don't know about the storage yet, but eventually probably that's part of it. Those last two are fine, I think, designed to minimize embodied carbon and EV ready, but I just, I just want to be careful that we have a shared understanding when we're talking about net zero.
And I think, yeah, I think Ben too, the, the definition in this roadmap process, you know, you were involved in it, you know, us when we were sharing it initially, was it's going to evolve.
Yep.
This is, we're, we're putting a pin in the ground, we're saying, all right, here's what a roadmap might look like. We always talked about revisiting it every few years, and that's why I, you know, bring in the, the concepts from the regional effort. Hey, this is what was happening last summer, you know, the definition we wrote was a few years ago. So the, the grid thinking is really a big part of it. 30% of the energy from the grid, these, you know, in, in our area, about 30% is renewable, so that's going to get better and better, so yes, we need to take that into account, so I don't think it was ever meant to be a static definition.
Yeah, thanks Jeff, and I think that's exactly what we're doing tonight, right, we're revisiting this, and I think that's what it's important, like, for Aaron coming in here and being asked, here's our path to net zero, update these codes to meet it. It, it might have seemed like very rigid, but really we're always saying, we don't really know what we're talking about, we, we're talking about the future, so we're going to put some stakes in the ground, and then we're going to revisit as we get closer to those benchmarks, and I think that that's partly where we are now.
The primary note that I made for myself coming here tonight was just to remember to mention that it is, it was intended as, from my perspective, I was understanding it to be a, a living document, and that there are parts of it that have already been explored, and we've seen that we, we expect to alter, and other parts that we have plans of intending to explore. So there's already stuff in here that we've kind of started down the road to figure out how could the town implement this, and, and thought that we want to look for other options, so that's just a reminder that, that we see it, and, and Aaron and I have met in the last couple of weeks a few times to talk about really getting his input now that he's kind of maybe soon going to have time to come up for air.
Thoughts from board members on this definition and the different attributes, Jess?
I just think we need to be careful with this idea of electrification as we're looking at the code and what we're requiring, because right now, what I've heard the board say is that we're not ready to say all-electric, no gas, in Carbondale. We're not there, from my understanding, and so to put into this Roadmap or whatever we're calling this, that. It's powered by electricity. I I just, I just want to leave that. I don't want to lock ourselves into that because we've said we're not there. And I don't think we're, I don't think the technology is there in building science right now. And. So my conversations with Aaron, when we were talking about where the cost increases are. For regular people in Carbondale, when it comes to these codes, it's the existing buildings and and requiring. If we're going to say that existing building stock has to get to these attributes. You're going to prevent people from doing any work on their homes. And so. I just want to be really careful with is powered by electricity.
And I would just clarify, I agree with you that we're not there now, but I think what we're saying is, you know, we're on a path toward this, right? So maybe that's still, we've said twenty thirty, that's very soon. Um, but we've also said twenty fifty for some of it. Like, we're saying that eventually, that's where we're headed. And we're kind of ratcheting things to get there. I want to be careful about the part about onsite production. Because if that's part of our definition, then we should be ratcheting that up all the time. And I don't believe that anymore.
I just don't think we're at a point where we can say, with the code updates that we're doing now. That requiring it to be powered by electricity now, or even by twenty thirty. Is maybe by twenty thirty, I don't know, technology changes all the time, but. I just, I just want to caution us with this is powered by electricity idea.
Other thoughts on the definition or the attributes at this point? Chris?
I mean, for me, the the whole discussion is around equity and and our climate goals and and the breakdown for me is. Really along those lines and and for me, I feel like there's kind of a. Pretty significant difference between the tier one and tier two and then into tier three, tier four. And I feel like those deserve a different sort of treatment in a certain sense in terms of like. Yeah, trying not to make it too difficult on people who are just trying to modify a regular house, I guess. But if somebody's trying to build a six thousand dollar square foot house, I want this thing to be. Uh, a model case of energy efficiency. And I feel like those two, three and four. I, you know, I'm not sure I like, I think maybe these things that are getting struck struck from them should stay in those high categories. And those should be subject to um to to more testing and more um onsite renewables and stuff like that. Because I think those are going to be luxury houses anyway and they, uh, there's not really. It doesn't, does it? I don't know if it makes a difference if it's a four million dollar house or a five million dollar house. To me.
Are you referring to new building? Or existing?
New, new building.
Because my comments were all regarding existing building, not as much new building. Because I think it's much easier to hit these goals with new building.
But I don't know, I mean, I guess I might have some consideration if somebody is doing a. It already has built a six thousand square foot house over an RBR and is proposing to put another room on it or whatever.
Okay, so let's, we'll look at this.
So I guess for me, that that would be the main thing is, I guess, trying to figure out how we can, yeah, reduce the burden on. People, on normal people, reduce the like. Requirements that people have to have consultants to make their way through the process at the lowest end. And but at the highest end, to make sure that we are holding people who are building a third house or whatever, that they are actually. Going to be assisted assisting our like local green energy companies and stuff. Like, there's an economic development portion to it, I think, in terms of that money, for the most part, is being spent on tradespeople in the valley, so.
I think what, I think what both Jess, I think that's Jess talking, sorry, I can't see you. And Chris. That's, you're both saying things that are in the roadmap, so I think. That's great. I mean, that was, that's it, that some similar comments have come from previous, previous boards. And that's why we structured it the way we did.
Okay.
For that flexibility.
I know we'll see the tears in a minute. Any other thoughts on just what we mean when we say net zero before? That's why I wanted to pause on this slide to make sure that we. And I'm hearing Jess says, we're not there yet with electrification, so she has some reluctance around that. I'm saying I have some reluctance about the onsite generation. Erica?
Well, I was just going to add, um, I do think referencing, um, you know, we put a ton of work into the roadmap that we worked on or the pathway. But this regional group has kind of some, maybe it's not updated language. But clearly language that they've uh workshopped with a whole bunch of people. That I think give the kind of flexibility that we might be looking for and so that our building department feels. Like there's some flexibility and maybe it doesn't get interpreted as like a rigid rule that we want implemented. Is referencing, you know, they're, they're going by kind of steps, which is logical, and then the suggested timeframes. And still, it's really about, you know, adopting, you know, updated codes. And then they specifically call out higher energy efficiency must be um met in homes over a certain size. And then same, it's more of like an electric preferred code to encourage electrification. Along with electric readiness for all energy end uses. And then um, so I just think there might be. Things that we pull from or we kind of sign on to this too as an update to um what we've done. I did not get a chance to compare them like side by side with ours, and I don't have them both up on my screen, but. I could see, I want to make sure that we're um kind of setting those goals, but then, Aaron, that you don't feel like. We said this four years ago and we didn't, you know, and so that means we need to happen now. Like, we're open to discussing this and we want to do what's most practical and feasible and that we have the contractors to do the work. Um, and that there's technology available, readily available to implement. We don't want to do any sort of policy that would be super stringent on people um that can't be implemented. Or would be over overly difficult to implement, I should say.
Okay, yes, Catherine. Why don't you join, get a, get a mic. You can sit over here, you can sit there, but, or you can stand there, whatever you want to do.
Stand here?
That's fine, wherever you want to be, there's lots of mics.
Just so Jeff, Jeff needs to hear you.
Yeah, and introduce yourself for the record, and some people might not know you.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, so Catherine Rushton, I am a town citizen interested party. I did used to work for Clear. And worked with Jeff on the original iteration of the path to net zero. Um, and I'm also the co-owner of a small HVAC contracting company. And so kind of wearing both the hats around efficiency. But also how does this impact contractors and all that kind of thing. So um, just to speak to what Ben was saying about. The net zero definition, if we're not going to require um onsite generation. Then really, we're not talking about a net zero building because we don't have a fully renewable grid. And so if we decide to not require onsite, then maybe we need to change this definition to being net zero ready. And a net zero ready code. Um, I mean, I still really stand behind the idea of having some onsite generation. Because there are future benefits that will come down in terms of resilience. And so I think that um, you know, we, we should really consider keeping the onsite generation piece, especially because. I think that the way it's written right now, as the the grid greens up, you're only really being required to produce a certain amount, you know, onsite. It's not like you have to be a hundred percent producing all the electricity you need for your building. Um, we're really looking for just a portion uh to be onsite. And as we get more renewable energy on the grid, that proportion will be smaller and smaller. We may even, if we get to a hundred percent grid, we won't need onsite. And maybe you could just do onsite because you want resilience. Um, so that was, that was my main comment about the onsite piece.
Okay, thanks, Catherine.
Thanks.
I'll just echo that a little bit. I think there's our important resilience, just to play that. That side of the, that conversation as well, as well, is I think there are resilience arguments to be made for having more solar. You know, I'm not sure, obviously, maybe they're not ready to be flipped over to a, you know, a. Their own system or whatever in an event, an emergency, but um, and then also, I guess, you know, uh. External, externalizing all of your impacts of the, you know, developing a hundred percent renewable grid is not a zero impact proposition. It's huge windmills and giant industrial impacts on the eastern plains or. Elsewhere in the country that we are externalizing. So in as much as we aren't. Adding to that burden overly much, I think it's, it is important for us to continue, I think, to look for ways to. You, especially in places where we and buildings do seem like the perfect opportunity of something that is otherwise, that sun is being wasted essentially, so. So I guess, I think there's still those arguments for it, but I don't, I think in both cases, absolutism is not really to our benefit. I think um, in most cases, we're going to get to, we're never going to get to hundred percent of anything. We're, just have to accept that, I think. But getting the ninety percent is a heck of a lot better than where we are right now. And so I think both in the grid and in all of these things. We can lay out that goal, but I think we have to, you know, not be absolutist about things and and be, yeah. We're always going to have to be reassessing stuff as time goes by, so.
Okay.
Maybe, can I just, want some, something really brief to say in response to Jess's uh comment about focusing on pure electrification. And the concept of a path toward net zero, that um we aren't leaving gas savings. And ways to encourage higher efficiency gas equipment completely out of the conversation. And that's um a personal. Point of mind to make sure that we keep that in focus and we continue to look for ways to to encourage. Reduction in gas usage by higher performance gas equipment in existing buildings. Um, and bringing um ways to incentivize that and even write that into elements of this code. Has been, have been discussed. I just wanted to mention that.
Okay. All right, let's keep going. Jeff, I just wanted to pause there, uh, maybe for too long, but uh, let's keep going.
Good, good questions. Yeah. You know, we've just had some town goals and we are trying to work toward it and we're doing things. You know, like the bottom couple of points talk about uh existing buildings, just benchmarking energy use, how much are you using? Trying to figure out a way to help get get the existing building stock to be more renewable and more uh closer to net zero. These are just the the charts that you've all seen about, you know, the paths to net zero for new construction. You know, increasing that, the top line is about renewables, increasing it. And we, we've talked about having a portion, twenty five percent onsite and then the balance offsite. Once the grid gets greener and greener. So again, never, not well, not until twenty thirty do we start to say no gas allowed. But we're really working toward that in all, in all phases of these paths. You know, the, I think Chris kind of alluded to this about the larger homes um getting. Well, this isn't exactly what we've adopted. This is a good example of working with Aaron and others to say, hey. No, this, these aren't the right numbers. Let's scale that back. Let's look at something that makes sense using the HERS number. You know, Home Energy Rating System to give a score for the building thermal envelope before you add renewables and then one after. If you do a whole lot before renewables, then you have to add fewer renewables. So there, we have adopted and adapted what we're proposing in the code, you know, just again, using this as a guideline. You know, we're still kind of proposing about twenty five percent. So we're a number of years behind this, just because it's taken a long time to do it. Again, town buildings, the same thing, moving toward that. No gas goal. And I agree with um Jess that. Maybe we're not there and having a lot of discussions about heat pumps and are they installed right and various things. So maybe it's pushing that back a few years. But it's a goal to aspire to. Just some definitions there and just, you know, the highlights of what we're doing, looking at the house size again. That um discouraging natural gas. And we're, and we're not saying anything about. Existing construction triggers make requiring uh electrification for existing buildings. We don't push, we push that out to twenty thirty and beyond with the uh path to net zero for existing buildings. Over the top, we are required by law, by Colorado statute, to adopt a Colorado solar ready and electric ready code. So part of what we're doing is, in some of these codes, is already included in those. And Aaron has spent time going through those to make sure they mesh with uh what we're doing in Carbondale. You know, just the getting rid of that uh renewable residential efficient building program. Making that a lot simpler, you know, adopting, changing that table five, which is this table. This is more what Chris was talking about, you know, for the larger homes. You know, we've, we've gone to something simpler, the hers before renewables and hers after. It may be a penalty if you do um natural gas uh onsite. So not, not. Restricting the, not um eliminating natural gas, but really encouraging it and heading toward that goal of electrification.
Jeff, Jess has a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hers ratings. The only way to get a hers rating is to get a consultant to give you the hers rating, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
It's just an added cost.
Correct.
The way we have that set up, tier ones right now are not, they have two paths. They can take a prescriptive path or they can take the hers path. Just, so they're, they're, for the tier ones, we were trying to work with uh the idea that we promote. The the more affordable housing design in there, the smaller housing, uh, to give them that simpler process as a not well.
I would just consider doing that for tier one and tier two.
I have a note here already about that.
Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, that was, that came from previous board. So, you know, again, as new people come in and are involved in the process, those things will change. I mean, basically, one of our directions from the trustees and the community was to simplify things, so. It was basically let, if we just do a simple hers method, we don't have to do a lot of these other requirements. So that's why we've gone that way. Other communities are going that way. Um, yes, it does add cost.
Having a prescriptive path, because if you can hit that, if you're going to do the things that hit that anyway. Based on the code requirements, which sometimes the code requirements help you hit that prescriptive path anyway. And we're talking about, I, I know that four thousand square feet sounds like a lot, but. Seventeen fifty is also very difficult. It's difficult to build a house that small as well, so. I just, I think it's smart to have some flexibility in the two tiers.
Okay, thanks, Jess.
And Aaron, might correct that there is still a prescriptive compliance path for commercial construction.
There is, other than, it's also tags to the green code, which has a lot of other provisions in it.
So the multi, the larger multifamily uh construction that falls under the commercial code um could potentially have some.
Well, and most of your, most of your multifamily is going to wind up tier one anyway, you know, because they're, to get. An average that would exceed that seventeen hundred and fifty square feet of floor area. That'd be a pretty monstrous building that would even have that, so. Think they, they, most of those are always going to fall under a tier one every day. Okay, you can go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I mean, just the, these are just the electric ready and solar ready codes that are um being required by the state. Basically, just having infrastructure in place, I'm sorry, infrastructure in place for um the move to electrification. And electrical vehicle charging, you know, that kind of thing is already in our um planning, you know, the UDC. Solar ready just means making sure there's roof space and the panel capacity, so. Not really onerous, but yes, again, it does add cost. And and again, this is required by the state.
Yes, Jess.
Is there a trigger point for the electric ready and solar ready for remodels? I can't remember.
It's poorly defined. We're working on kind of how to land somewhere. I feel like it's going to be in like. What we currently are working under like a tier three level definition of remodel, so pretty major renovation before we would. Trigger the electric ready code.
I just want to make sure that we understand that this electric ready, such as electric panel capacity and physical space to make the transition to electric heating and cooling. Could trigger very expensive things like new transformers and that, that's an expensive requirement. So I want to make sure that. So I want to make sure that for normal people who are doing remodels, that we keep that in mind, that we don't want to have to require that on a normal person's house in Carbondale yet.
And those are, in a way, these are the easiest codes for me to swallow because they're required by the state, right? So I mean, it sounds like, do we have some discretion with where they're triggered?
Well, I would say yes, because the language is pretty vague within the, within the electric ready code.
For existing buildings.
Yes.
Not for.
Everything new lands in it, but yeah.
Okay.
It's my main concern.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a good, good question. Just showing we've been, we've cut it, cut out a number of requirements and innovation items that you all brought up, you know, a few months ago that, let's keep it simpler. Just the other thing that we're introducing into this code and refining is, you know, currently we just regulate snow melt pools, spas and garages. And what we found through studies and working, you know, engineering firms, how much energy is wasted by heat tape, heat mats for snow melt and outdoor fireplaces and heaters. Don't see a lot of those in Carbondale. However, it's being rather be pre act, you know, preemptive than wait till it's too late. So trying again, this is really what's happening regionally. So we're doing what's happening in all the communities. I think we presented at a previous presentation. Just the list of all the communities that are doing this kind of thing. And it's pretty significant, significant in mountain communities. I mean, that, that's just the basic information to trigger this discussion.
Great. Thanks, Jeff, and thanks Heidi and Catherine for adding in. So, you know, our goal tonight again is for Aaron to have clarity so that when you go away, back into the challenging work of getting these codes updated and what you bring back to us in a few weeks is what we asked for essentially. And so let's, let's start talking about that. What I'm hearing from the board is making sure that we're reducing the burden on smaller houses and existing stock. It sounds like there's efforts being made to do those things. Potentially dumping like the hers exemption up from tier one to tier two, things like that as you come across them. I mean, Aaron, maybe you could frame it for us a little bit more, like what are some of the big things that are causing you to really adapt these codes? Because in my mind, what I've been really wondering throughout this process is have the codes caught up with Carbondale's ambitions in large degree? And if so, great, let's adopt them as is as much as possible. And then keep, keeping ourselves up to date every couple of years so that we're not in the situation we are now where our code is fifteen plus years out of date. So where, where are the issues where you're kind of having a hard time, Aaron? You know, adhering to the, our goals and the path to net zero and updating the current codes. And there's some conflicts and a bunch of modifications. What are some things where you'd like some feedback on like, do we want the code to be modified or, or stick with the code?
Well, I think it really still always boils down to the existing buildings. In a lot of ways, I feel like the codes are already developed to reduce carbon emissions and improve energy efficiency. Whenever we're working on a existing home that's doing work that requires a permit, the codes already start to address that. And also in line with that is the state keeps throwing more stuff for us too. So in a lot of ways, I feel like not getting much farther ahead of the code, particularly in existing buildings. And if the state's starting to bring in more to address, we can work through it with that versus the local requirements. And at least then we can blame the state. With regards to new, new construction, I feel like it's probably important to continue to take some of the additional steps that we have in the past just to keep ahead of that. And we're not talking way far ahead of that, but keeping us ahead, I don't, I can't, it's really hard to make a determination with, without doing a lot of modeling to say, what is this house under the twenty one code do that comparatively to what we built in the oh nine code with the fifteen energy code with the residential efficiency building program and kind of come up with a name. But that, I think there's easy enough to stay ahead of it with some simple requirements like the tier standards. And at least create some steps that improve on that requirement. So.
Okay. So it sounds like I'm hearing from the board alignment with what you're saying about existing construction, about not making it too stringent and mostly going with the state codes on existing construction. I mean, want to pause there and make sure that's right. Like, is there anything where we're really adamant that we exceed the state's, you know, the standard codes? I don't know what to call these international building codes and energy codes and all that for existing construction.
I think there's one.
Okay.
I think that like Heidi alluded to, we can make improvements on efficiency of gas. There are some ways that we can still allow maybe natural draft equipment under certain requirements. But in general, try and find ways to promote moving things with more efficient type method.
If I get, the slide I have up there just shows, you know, our, the proposed path to net zero for existing buildings. And it's really pretty minimal requirements that have been in that, that path.
Jeff, can you zoom in on that at all? It's really hard for us to see and I'd like to see it.
This is actually one I want to talk about too, Jeff, because when I read this, I read it as like, when you read the numbers at twenty thirty, twenty forty, they almost feel like they're more, there's more here than there is in a new building.
Well, I mean, we didn't pan it out that far. I mean, this is just dream state. It's like, okay, what if, remember the goal of twenty fifty to get there for the town of Carbondale is reduce, you know, eliminate all carbon emissions. So what would it take? That's, that's all this was like, hey, let's, let's throw something against the wall. And, you know, I think we're just starting to in twenty twenty four, twenty five, looking at making buildings more efficient. That's the first step. And then by twenty twenty seven, we're talking about renewable energy systems. So. And then you see by twenty thirty HVAC equipment replacements must be electric. That's the first year that we mentioned that coming into play. So I feel like this is fairly, a fairly soft approach. And if we're not ready by twenty thirty for the replacements to be all electric, we have to push that. So I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of this slide and that we're not trying to do. The roadmap has never, or the path to net zero has never said, let's do it right away. So I don't think it varies from that plan to, to not do it.
And, and I'll just add Jeff that, I mean, when we worked on this path to net zero, the first step was adopting these codes, like as it, like it was not like adopt the codes with all of these things in it. We're just have been a little bit behind in getting that first step done. So I think definitely don't look at our future years where we were pontificating on what we, you know, ambitiously want to state. We want to show the community that we're thinking about it. But I mean, in twenty thirty, I'm not going to be on the board anymore. None of us will be. You might still be in that position. I don't know. You might not be. But I just think we, you know, it's just, it's kind of, it's exactly what it says. It's just saying, here's a potential path that's there. But there should be no pressure to be like, oh, we need to get this in the code now in case we never update the codes again by twenty thirty. Like that's for us as a future board to take on even next year. I mean, we should be looking at this as like, we're, we are going to be looking at these. You're going to come back to us and say, okay, we put this in and it's not working. Or we're going to hear from people and say, this isn't feasible or something. So we're going to be adapting along the way. So we really have to keep that in mind when we're looking at these, that we don't know what it's going to be like in twenty thirty. We don't even, I mean, the technologies have changed a lot since I've been in the clean energy world. And so I think just keeping that in mind, we don't need to make code now for twenty thirty.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point. We're, we're pretty much on track with what's up there in twenty twenty five. If we're doing the thermal efficiency upgrades, right? And so.
Could be mandated by the code as we did work there. Yes.
Yeah. And so I think Erica's right. We don't have to be putting anything that's ahead into it now. And she's right that the updating the codes, I mean, and even in the regional roadmap, it says the first step is get your codes up to date. And so I still think like the minimal modifications we can make to these well vetted, proven codes that builders can understand that aren't different in every single community, that's our, that's still our best first step.
And the first, the, the first footnote under that, the roadmap is a living document that can be updated and reviewed as new information, you know, comes available. So that's, we're doing the right thing. This is part of the process we envisioned. Hey, maybe let's push electrification out if that's the reality. So you're right on track. Good job.
I just want to point out what Aaron, I want to echo what Aaron said. When we're looking at this, I want to make sure that we're not trying to make it harder and more stringent for existing buildings than we are for new buildings, because it's much easier and much cheaper to put these things into new buildings than it is to put them into existing buildings. The other thing I would just suggest is that I know we want to be ahead of the curve. But on these efficiencies, on the gas appliances, maybe we just adopt what's in the code and not try to make them more stringent right now. No matter what we do, if we adopt new code today, it's going to be better than what we have. So I don't want to get, my concern is that we're going to get wrapped up in these ways that Carbondale can be better and and, and have these really intricate changes to like how efficient a gas boiler is going to be. I bet they don't even make the boilers and the furnaces that are required in the two thousand nine code anymore because everything's more efficient now. So.
Absolutely do, for the record.
Okay. Well, I don't think anyone's going to put them in here.
I'm sorry, just to point, they, they are in, in the town of Carbondale, people are putting eighty percent efficient boilers in multimillion dollar homes, brand new. It's happening regularly in Carbondale. So part of my work on this was that I did fifty residential assessments in the town of Carbondale last year. So folks just signed up for free. And I think I got a pretty good sampling of documenting what the age and the combustion types. So the type of mechanical equipment in all of those homes, we actually did fifty five of them. And I saw a lot of brand new natural drafts. So that's eighty percent efficient, non, non condensing boilers and many, many natural draft water heaters, brand new in the town of Carbondale, all installed, not technically per code, which is a major life safety issue.
So, but is it, but you wouldn't be allowed to put those in if it's not per code?
Oh, they, it happens all the time. Sorry. I don't, I, that's probably getting into the weeds, but.
I can only say that I can think of only since I've been here and running this office that I think only, well, I didn't even issue that permit either. But pretty much everything I've issued since I've started has been high efficiency. I have had some issues where people have tried to substitute that was contrary to their hers. Then they can go through the process again.
But we're doing, we're by implementing new code and enforcing the new code, we have ways to make sure.
The new code does still allow some low efficiency equipment to be installed.
And I'm sorry, I was talking about existing buildings. People are purchasing new and installing new eighty percent efficient boilers and natural draft water heaters into bedrooms and living rooms all over the town of Carbondale in existing homes.
And I think most of that happened without permit too.
Oh, yeah. How many water heater permits do you see in here?
The hope is that we're getting to a point where it's easy to get a permit and it's easy to get your inspections and it's a simple process. It doesn't cost a lot of money so that people have to meet the code. That's the whole idea, right?
Definitely the idea. There are some complications there with, like, I have to work with the water department. And state has required the water purveyors to protect their water supplies. So when I issue certain permits, I have to evaluate at home and determine if they are subject to that requirement as well. Typically is triggered when we have plumbing work going on inside a home. If you're replacing windows, putting a new roof on the, when I, before I started, that was a, it just paperwork said every permit that's issued is required to do this. I pointed out when I started that that doesn't work. A roofer shouldn't be subject to backflow protection requirements. But when we have submittals that meet those needs, absolutely, because I should have somebody that's familiar enough with the plumbing system, if they're doing plumbing, plumbing on a water heater or a boiler that also has backflow protection requirements. So there, there are some complexities there that my department's responsible for, ensuring compliance before another department.
Think, again, we're trying to give direction so that when you come back, it's clear and we're on the same page. And we don't make you do a whole lot of work and then say, that's not what we want. And what I'm hearing from Jess is like, if there are places in the code update where Aaron and with our consultants and everybody, you say, all right, the twenty twenty one energy code says it only needs to be at this level of efficiency, but I'm recommending that we amend it to be at this higher level because I think we just need an explanation of each of those. And I think I would agree, and I think most of us would probably agree, but I don't want to speak for anybody else with Jess, that where we can stick with the updated code, let's stick with the updated code. But for example, if we're at a more efficient standard now and the new code is less than that, well, we probably don't want to go backwards. Right? But we also, I agree, Jess, we don't want to overly complicate it and we don't want to have our own ways of calculating everything. Like where we can stick with industry standards and widely adopted codes, let's do that. Does that sound right to people? Okay.
Sounds good.
Does that, is that making sense to you?
Yep. I've been already taking steps in that direction already.
Okay, great. I mean, looking down my list of things we said we would talk about is clarify how tightly to adhere to the path during these code updates. We've been talking about that quite a bit. Clarify our new versus existing construction. I think we've talked about that a lot. Definition of net zero, I don't feel like we settled on a definition. I feel like there's some other work that follows these code updates actually. That's like an update to our path to net zero. That's a little more formal. Right now, it's like in these different word docs all over the place. I never can find it. Looking at that regional effort. So, you know, maybe that's some of our, our work with, with clear and the e-board or something like that in the next year or two. But I think that clarify electrification and natural gas goals. I mean, I think it's pretty clear that we want to, we want to get there eventually, but as people have pointed out, we can't get there right now. But I think we're still sticking with the goal of ultimately everything's powered by renewable energy. So what, what's either unclear or we need to talk about more or additional feedback you need, Aaron? Christina, we haven't heard anything from Lauren. We haven't heard anything from, or anybody else, just thoughts. We're at, we're at an hour. It doesn't mean we have to stop right now, but that's about what we had allotted. So if we feel like we've said what we need to say, I think we're in pretty good shape.
I think I've got pretty good information here as far as where I can at least get back to those and, you know, make some changes to some things that have already been put in there and maybe put in a few things that might need to be put in there. But overall, I think I've got a pretty good handle on what we're trying to accomplish here.
Other thoughts and trustees? Christina, any thoughts?
Yeah, I just keep thinking about that definition of net zero and it does kind of, I don't know, it's kind of discouraging, honestly, especially if you had an existing home and going through this because you're like, wow, how am I ever going to get there? And so right when I read that, I'm like, then I get disengaged. So I just feel like maybe that could be reworded for just regular people, for community, you know, for the community. I just think that's really important because like I said, as a, you know, person with an existing home and I read that, I'm just, I already feel overwhelmed and then I shut down. And then I could imagine like, if I want to even do anything to the house, like Jess said, then I'm just like, forget that. Because then who knows what else is going to come up. So I, I mean, I, I think going back to that definition is important. And I don't know. I mean, is that really? Like I said, I just feel it's a little overwhelming sometimes.
How do you feel about that, working on that definition and looking at the benchmarks and the years and the whole pathway being some follow up work that we do after the code updates? Like, do, I guess my question is, I started off thinking, we need to agree on a definition right now. But as we talked about, I'm like, okay, we're not going to get there right now. So I, I feel like that's follow up work that we can move forward with these cup, code updates without a really solid definition of net zero. But do you feel like that's something that we need to solidify now or?
Oh, no.
Okay.
For, for me, the key thing I think is, is just making sure we are, I really like, liked reading this regional net zero thing. And I think trying to get our. And I think trying to get ourselves in line with that as much as possible so that it feels regionally like that's all happening. People are on the same page wherever they're building in the valley or whatever. That's sort of the main thing for me and I'm happy with where that, that thing is. So I don't feel like I need to relitigate it and define it for myself. Or even be, as I said, absolutist about.
Yeah.
We have to get to this, but I think it's a good, good beacon in the distance, at least to be like pointing towards.
Sometimes I think the document, the Carbondale document should actually be called the path toward net zero.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we could do that, we could change it.
And Christina, I think that's really good feedback on existing homes and the communications around that. And I think Clear could help us a lot with. When we get to communicating what we are adopting and promoting. I mean, the work on existing buildings, you know, this is like a tiny part of all the work that Clear does. And Garfield Clean Energy on our behalf and like reaching out to homeowners and stuff. Um, this is just trying to address like, are there components we could put into our code that would maybe create some triggers to kind of call the question? Um, but if it feels really overwhelming, that's really good input. Um, just right off the bat too of like, okay. We have to continue to um, make that simple for folks to want to be able to upgrade their homes or existing homes. Because it's folk, it's, there's a very low embodied carbon in an existing home getting upgraded and staying here and keeping families housed. So. That just kind of backs up all the work that uh, Clear is doing for us as well. And then maybe we could do some more communications work with you guys too.
When you're in there, work on those triggers too. I think that's really, I mean. Triggers to me permit, you know, the code, what triggers permits?
Yeah.
That's a good trigger. There's some other ones listed in here that I struggle to read and go, really?
They were like brainstorm lists.
Yeah.
And we can meet with whoever from the town wants to look at what other jurisdictions, um, because there are other jurisdictions that have adopted and defined the triggers to require. Approve, I mean, I'm sorry, improvements to existing buildings. We can look what other jurisdictions are doing and, and see what those are interesting to you guys.
What we're going through right now is kind of like Jeff said, it's kind of a natural process of this is a living document. Where we put a stake in the ground and we said, let's see if we can get there. And now we're going through this process and. Our building official is saying, there's some parts that I don't feel like we're ready for. And we want you to push back on that. And say, I don't advise that you adopt these parts that were in your goals yet for these reasons. And I advise that you, you know, just stick with the, the general code there. Um, do we need to discuss uh, onsite renewable requirements? I know I've been harping on that a little bit, but like, are you going to bring us some increased onsite renewable requirements? And do you need any feedback before you do?
I wasn't really working on increased renewable requirements. I was trying to work ways into other options.
Okay.
You know, instead of just saying this is the option, trying to find some other paths that may be considered equivalent and yet as beneficial.
Okay. Okay. Well, I think we look forward to what those recommendations are. Um, and we talked at length at some point about. Do we give a penalty for offsite? We used to give a penalty for offsite renewable and like all that has changed over time. So I just don't really know where we are on that. And I don't want you to put a lot of work into something and bring us back that. And we don't want to do it.
I just want to make a quick comment about some of the things that I observed over the last year, year and a half with regard to onsite solar. Like anything that you make a decision that's supposed to be like all to the positive. And then here come the unintended consequences. With regard to permitting and getting Excel, particularly Excel. Um, analysis of the capability of the grid in the area that that solar has to go into. And, and I don't know if they're changing this, but um, I was a little bit horrified when I discovered that. You know, if you have, let's use RVR for an example, because it's mostly new homes. You know, the new home goes in here and then, you know, one oh one goes in, one oh three goes in, one oh five goes in, one oh seven goes in. All of a sudden, one oh nine goes in and they go for their permit and Excel says, sorry, transformer can't support that. You need a new transformer and guess what, builder, you got to pay for it. Meanwhile, the four houses before them had put on that onsite solar and the transformer could handle it. But there is no capacity for making all of those different builders and homeowners. Pay their share of upgrading that transformer. Um, that's really sort of a rough. Explanation, but when it comes to the different, the difference between going on to the greener grid. Or um, buying into some other offsite or onsite solar. Um, there are some other things that have come up that have been surprises to us and it costs a lot and it takes months. Sorry, that's all, that's all, I don't know.
Something and then I see that Catherine is.
The other problem that we're running into in those situations is that. One oh nine has to pay for the transformer, but then the next four houses can get on that transformer. And there's no path for sharing that cost. And you don't own the transformer. So you have to pay thirty thousand dollars to buy the transformer, but it's Excel's transformer. And, and you can't go back to the other houses to ask for shared costs and you can't go to the houses, the next four houses that get on that transformer. The city of Aspen's having the same problem because they're the utility. And so we're running into these issues where you need a new transformer, but then the city of Aspen says, well, we're not paying for it and you can't put it on our easements. So put it in your parking spot and then let your neighbors get on it and they don't have to pay for it.
Yeah, I only brought it up because of the comment about increasing onsite has some other issues.
Catherine, did you want to share thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to share that, I mean, this is a known issue, right? Like not just with solar, but electrification in general. And so the PUC commissioned a uh, study on barriers to electrification. Um, that has been completed. And so now they have this as like, you know, it's, it's one of their. They're known things that they're, they're going to address. And so Excel are going to have to come through, come up with a new, you know, methodology. And so while it is an existing problem, it's not going to be an existing problem forever, right? We're gonna, we're gonna overcome these things. So let's not let those kinds of things determine whether we decide to require onsite solar or not. Because I do think solar is still a really important part of our, our path forward, um, as is electrification. And we're going to have to address these issues and it's, and this is more than just a Carbondale problem, right? This is being addressed on a much larger scale.
I think where we want to be careful though is that we're not requiring something that's then not feasible because there's a problem at another level.
Agreed.
Like, so we'd like to see that problem solved before we increase our onsite solar.
Or at least provide some other options that maybe work just as well and maybe don't cause as much additional burden.
Okay. So what, what I'm hearing then Aaron is next steps is we'd love to see these code updates with really as few modifications as possible in order to let us not go backwards. And hopefully we're going forwards in a lot of ways that are consistent with what others are doing, that are straightforward and easier to build to. Yeah, that's, those are the main goals I'm hearing. And then some follow up work that's um, probably with Clear and, and others on. Probably moving toward the regional path to net zero or roadmap or whatever we call it. In the next year or two. And acknowledging that, yeah, for this and future boards and staff, this is a living document. We say we want to get there. We wanted to get there years ago. We're, we, we want to get there as fast as we can. Um, but we have to live within the, you know, work within the reality that we're living in. And so we don't want to make it so onerous that. A minor remodel becomes prohibitively expensive and, and that there's technical hurdles that they can't jump over and all that. I also don't want those of you from Clear and, and our partners and, and Jeff and everybody who's worked on this for all these years and have been leaders in all this work. To feel like we're taking a step back. I don't feel that way right now. I feel like kind of what Erica said, that like one of the first steps is getting these codes updated. So we're still trying to just take that step and then let it settle, see where we are, make sure that everything's working and then kind of keep marching forward. We just don't want to take too big of a leap where we end up, you know, in a, in an unfeasible situation for people. Okay, anything else?
Can I just off, offer that, that there is a presentation available on the uh, regional efforts? If you want to have that at some future date, you might want to consider that.
You mean like a, there's a person who goes around and does this presentation?
Yes.
Oh, cool.
So there, that could help inform the whole discussion if, if you want to dial in on that a bit more in the future.
Great. Okay, any last thoughts? You got what you need?
Ready to go back to work?
All right. Thank you so much for all the work that you're doing, Aaron. We appreciate it. We know it's very hard. All right. Okay, thanks Heidi. Thanks Catherine, thanks Lauren. Thanks Jeff.
Bye. Thank you all.
Have a good night.
All right. Next item on the agenda is use of bag fee funds for new reimbursement grant. This was Erica's idea, um, and Lauren's done some work. Uh, so. Lauren, it's probably yours to kick off and look forward to everybody's thoughts on this.
Okay, thank you. Um, so in, you know, talking to Erica and listening to the board discuss this a couple of times in the last few months. Talked to the staff, did some research about, you know, what our um, revenue and our expenses have been. And why the expenses went down a little bit and um, what kinds of things we can spend these bag fee funds on. I still am not clear. Um, I don't think we'll ever be clear why there was that huge bump in twenty twenty three. It could be partly explained by the fact that the state um, legislated. All of a sudden the state's legislating on bag fees and there are more um, stores that are um, subject to the bag fees. But not to that extent. I honestly think that somewhere along the line, there was a math error. And. Money didn't get put into that account that should have been in that account and it was corrected in a journal entry or something. And it just ended up with this huge bump. As I could see it maybe being ten or fifteen thousand dollars more. When the state got involved, but to have it, you know, almost double for the year was. And then just fall right back down. Doesn't make a whole lot of sense, so I can't explain that. We just don't anticipate that that's going to happen again. So, you know, my main points of this are. There's some really good work to be done and there are some really good ways of incentivizing um, good waste diversion. Particularly for organizations and um, special events that. Really want to do this, but don't necessarily have the bandwidth to just jump into it all at once. Um, without trying to figure out how they raise their revenue to be able to pay for some of these things as well. But based on what the numbers look like, um, having any kind of program like this. That uses only the excess in the bag fund or the bag fee fund doesn't appear to be sustainable for any length of time. Might be, you could have it be a one year program, a two year program, or maybe a three year program, but I do not think that it would last. Longer than that. Um, not at current levels. Well, and especially not that what we're hoping is that the bag fees will decrease. I mean, this was sort of the point of it all. It wasn't really a money making um, effort. Having said that, there were a lot of other little things like, all right, if we put a program like this in place. What are the rules? And Eric and I talked about this a lot and, and I expect that she probably is going to have a few things to say about that. But you know, everything from who's eligible to what expenses are eligible. Would a nonprofit who's applying for this kind of reimbursement, if they are already getting money from. The town on a regular community grant, are they still eligible for this on top of that money? The um, the original conversation was about, you know, you have an event. You spend this much on composting, you know, what have you. You can just present your receipt and the town will reimburse you for half. But on an annual basis, that means, you know, depending on how you set it up, what are you only gonna? You're going to run out of money by, by May and then, you know, somebody else isn't going to have it be available. So that's why if we're doing this, I would recommend that we have a defined application period and then it can look backwards twelve months. That's a little difficult for some of these organizations as well if they don't get reimbursed. For if they have an event in February and they can't get reimbursed until November. But um, you know, and I'm certainly open to other ideas about how to do that and how to make it fair. But to just have it be rolling, you're going to run out of money in no time, I think. And you're not going to be able to really figure out how many applications you're going to get. It's going to be a big guess. And by the time we get a handle on it, we might have some money to, to continue it, what have you. Uh, let's see, I don't think uh, we budgeted twenty thousand dollars for twenty twenty five. At twenty thousand dollars, we probably have three years worth of money if we just kept it at twenty thousand dollars. I will say that just as a caution. We would recommend as staff, we would recommend that we always try to keep something of a balance in, a fund balance in the bag fee fund. Because ostensibly, the revenue is going to decrease, even if it's very, very gradual. But our expenses never decrease. So at some point they're going to cross over. And it's going to cost us more to do the programming that we're currently doing than we're bringing in. That may be a good deal in the future, but um, but I think we need to at least plan for that. Um, because again, this, the, this fee and this fund were not intended to. Um, make money for the town. They were really intended to incentivize the use of reset, you know, reusable bags and, you know, those kinds of things. And I do know that there are a number of businesses in town that. They've just stopped doing bags at all.
Yeah.
You know, Ace Hardware, they'll offer you a box, but you're not getting a bag from them. So anyway.
What do we spend the money on right now?
Um, the uh, spring cleanup, the hazardous waste, the e-waste, those kinds of.
Okay.
Pickup days.
Yeah.
Um, really what I'm looking for is a discussion and guidance from the board about. Whether you want to move forward with this type of a program and if so, what do you want it to look like? You know, I don't know if Erica, you want to?
Sure. Um, well, I had brought this up just as a, both, we had a pretty large fund balance in this fund. And just knowing that um, a lot of our local nonprofits that are putting on these really big events that are really popular. Are seeing increased costs across the board on everything and feeling like this was one way that we could both um, just make sure that they continue. If they're already composting and recycling, that they're already doing that, but to help them make sure they have the budget to continue it. And then just also acknowledging that uh, a lot of our waste diversion got started. Um, thanks to Evergreen Waste, taking a lot of it on pro bono. And they, um, it's not feasible for them to make a living if they give away other services for free. Uh, so they're having to also, you know, start charging nonprofits for these services. And that's generally for composting, you know, providing a dumpster at every event, it's actually relatively low costs. I got the costs for like dandelion day costs, I think it was a thousand dollars or twelve hundred dollars for the weekend. Um, mountain fair is the big one. Um, but then this would also be open to any other. Lauren and I couldn't really think of any other events that maybe aren't composting and recycling well or doing waste diversion well off the top of our heads. But there might be others that we just want to have some funds available so they can make sure to include that. That was really where this, this came from. And thank you Lauren for um, asking all these really great questions. And kind of writing this up, getting it in front of us. So.
So, I mean, one option is to give staff some feedback on this grant kind of program. Um, which is, it sounds like a great idea. I wondered if there are other options we could, should consider. I mean, I wonder if one other option is um, like if. I mean, I wonder if one other option is, like, if we, we have a fund balance that we don't really just need to just sit on. I think Lauren's right, we need to keep it healthy, but it doesn't need to be double what we had expected. It seems that we could spend some of this on increasing some of those waste diversion days that you mentioned. I know that those are really expensive to run. You know, we could do more of those, that kind of thing. It would also have a runout, though. Whatever we do, it's gonna run out in a certain number of years. And then I wondered, do we do the really high-quality, green team-style waste diversion at town events? Like, I mean, First Friday's not really a town event, but at the events that we put on? I just wondered if, okay, so we already do that? I guess just that just is out of the recreation budget?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the one thing that Erica and I talked about is that, you know, what we're, we're really not, particularly for these festivals, and whether it's Standing Lion Day, or Mountain Fair, or what have you, really not talking about flatware, right? A lot of that, the vendor is providing, you know, the food truck, or, you know, whoever is doing the food is providing those things. You reminded me, because Potato Days, we provide the flatware. But, but we're talking about roll-offs and, and things that are bigger cost items. Because what we don't want is to have somebody coming in and saying, I spent fifty dollars on compostable plates, and, you know, what have you, and then we've got a hundred different applications coming in for, you know, somebody wants twelve dollars and fifty cents, and somebody else wants seventy dollars, and someone else wants three thousand dollars. You know, so that was just sort of a line in the sand that we drew, but that was, I mean, maybe we do want to encourage some of the other organizations that are really spending much, much less. Then the question is, well, how do you really show that those things were composted? You know, if it's just getting thrown in the compost bin, and there's no roll-off, and there's no... So, that was a little difficult for me to sort of wrap my head around, is, you know, how do we make sure that it's really going to what we want it to go to? And that's why we put, you know, professional in here.
Yeah, Jess.
What, are there any regulations around what we're allowed to spend this fund on?
It's basically waste diversion and education around waste diversion. But yes, it's very limited.
So all these things are qualified? Were you thinking about something that might?
Yeah, I was just trying to think of like some other creative idea, like, how could we apply this to something we're doing at the pool? Or something we're doing in Town Hall, or?
Well, I think that, along those lines, I was wondering if we needed to, if we wanted to consider spend, because it's one-time funds essentially, if we wanted to consider it for sort of infrastructure, you know, whether it's air-proof trash cans and recycle bins, and, you know, that type of stuff in locations that we need. But I also like the idea of especially helping organizations that might not feel like they have it in their budget right now to do the full waste diversion program at their event, to help them get started. And then it's, you know, it's kind of like a seed grant. It's like, we'll help you pay for this for the first two years, and then that's it.
I mean, the other thought I had was how to use the funds to get waste diversion going at the rodeo.
Yeah.
And I'm, we had talked about that, and they've been making continual improvements and increasing costs, and they're cost-sharing, new bleachers that have to get installed this year and stuff like that. So I'm hesitant to ask them to take on one more thing, but unless it's something that we take on, where we, you know, just talk to Evergreen and like hire them to do it at the rodeo or something. There, honestly...
Erica and I were, were talking about was that if you're gonna try to get people at the rodeo to throw something in a compost bin instead of in the trash can, those stations need to be manned.
Yeah, it's like, not unfair. You're dealing with people who are partying and it's blasting on their mind.
It was just, that was an idea of like, could be...
Kind of a town event, even though it's not.
And it's not happening at all right now. I mean, there's recycle bins, but not all the recycling ends up in the recycle bins.
Is the money allowed to be used for educational purposes? I just wonder, like, my kids keep saying, like, we need to compost, the schools need to compost. Like, is there a way?
Oh, I don't think it's...
You don't think we can do an educational program? Or like a seed money for like the kids to do something where they're putting, I don't know, where like the trash cans are decorated? It's, I don't know.
I can look at, I can look at the, um...
It's not that...
Erica, you have it right there.
Carry my budget around with me? Who does I?
Just, I mean, it's education, but it's like public education, not kids' education. Fuzzy there, I'm not sure how clear it is, and whether we could run a kids' I bet we could run a kids' program, but I'm not sure we could give it to the schools for them to run a program, is what I'm saying.
E-Board weighed in on this? I mean, I just wonder, I don't want to drag this out. Like, it doesn't, we don't have to make this really complicated, but at the same time, if we don't really have a really clear, this is the best use of it tonight, I'd be curious what Kevin thinks, because if he facilitates all the, and manages all the waste diversion programs, if he's like, oh my God, I could really use another ten thousand a year for the next five years to do that, or if the E-Board would have thoughts on best, you know, highest and best...
Yeah, it has not been run by the E-Board.
It hasn't been vetted by the, by the E-Board. I did have some conversations with Kevin. His major concern is that it's not sustainable funding. And that we do need to have some money kept in a balance there, but he didn't particularly volunteer to run, you know, three more waste diversion events, because we have to staff those and, you know, what have you. So, we have in the past, and I'm gonna get this wrong, because I always get it wrong, we have done two e-waste disposal events a year, and this year and last year, we're only doing one, but that's because we're combining them with other things, and some of the contractors are the same company, so we're not separating them out. But we didn't, we haven't talked about any other particular programs that might be a better use of these funds, or use for part of these funds. And then, maybe it's a one-time, like, you know, we'd like to help stimulate this in Carbondale. So maybe it's, there is a special project, and there's a, even a special one-time grant program, I don't know. It was the staff felt pretty strongly that it should be super simple, and it should just be run by staff. And it's not a whole, like, let's bring all this to the board and average out the... No, very simple rules. If you qualify, you get this. If we have too many applications, then staff's authorized to just lower everybody by the same amount so it fits. We're not deciding who's most worthy, or anything like that.
Where do we want to go from here?
Well, I'm happy to, like, take it to the E-Board and just talk it through with them to, to get their ideas, in case there's anybody who's been thinking about what we're doing with our bag fee funds.
And I, and I could talk to staff tomorrow at the, at the department head meeting and find out if there's any one-time project that they feel would be a good use for some of these funds, anyway, that, that I'm just not thinking of.
Chris, do you think the E-Board would be open to that discussion?
Yeah, and if you want, I, I can't make the meeting, it's a special meeting on Wednesday, virtual.
Oh, this Wednesday?
Yeah.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
I know, I'm off too.
Tomorrow.
It is today.
Virtual, I've, let me see if it's at a different time. I think it's at the same time.
We could talk afterwards, too.
And I can't make it, but, so maybe you can go. Anyway. I, I like the idea, I think, and I liked Lauren's memo about it. And I feel like, yeah, if it is gonna go that direction, I feel like she's pretty much on the right direction for, for what I would feel like. And I feel like, sort of, yeah, the annual thing that can just be assessed at that point, based on where we are, kind of, in terms of budget each year. And here it's bigger, smaller. It is what it is.
Christine, any thoughts?
I, yeah, I always think about that student of the month idea where one of the girls came in and she was asking about more recycle bins in the, like, on Main Street. And I thought, well, if that's a one-time, how, I mean, how much really is that to add more bins and the cost? But maybe filtering it through the E-Board, that might be something that, like somebody said, maybe they are getting like these one-time requests. Because we, I mean, I, I don't, I don't even know how much it would be to put more recycle bins, but that's something that I think is a huge value, and people see. And I don't know if that is a one-time cost.
It's a one-time cost, but it's also more staff, I mean, it's more work.
Yeah.
For people who empty them or what have you. So we just have to take that into consideration.
That's the only thing.
We'd want to put like, we have twenty more bins for you to empty.
Or, I'm always thinking of, you know, because I'm always like, I gotta compost food, you know, I gotta compost more food. But I think the way to get there is when we do these community waste, like, maybe we could do a community waste on, on composting food, because I don't think we've done that, right? Like, have a big compost day, where you could just take your food and you could kind of see how it feels, and maybe that'll get that person to do it, but...
One thing that's really fabulous, and Kevin and I were talking about it the other day, is that for people who compost, Evergreen, and I think I was, we were talking about it too. One of the things that Evergreen does is they show you what your composting did, right? Because then they bring back dirt. And they're like, okay, guys, come see what you gave us. You know, you need to plant your garden, or what have you. So Kevin and I were talking about, you know, can we make that a bigger deal, to see that whole cycle and how that works? And maybe we make that part of this, you know, is that... I don't, it's not like they can divide it up and say, this is what Mountain Fair produced. It's how much dirt came from Mountain Fair's compost, but but there's certainly, there's certainly some potential there.
Okay, well, it sounds like we don't, it sounds like we generally support the idea, and we just want to make sure we're spinning it in the most effective way possible. So running it by E-Board, and I don't know if they have time tomorrow night, they probably already have a whole agenda. So I would imagine, maybe it's next month, like, I don't know how urgent this is, but I think it'd be okay if it takes another month to get feedback from the E-Board, get feedback from staff, and then come back to us with a recommendation, and I think we'll swiftly approve it.
I think either way, they think they could handle another item easily.
Okay.
That's up to Erica as to whether she works in her schedule or not.
Okay.
Okay, anything on that? Anything else on that item? Thanks Erica, thanks Lauren, thanks everybody for the good ideas. Okay, last item on the agenda then is the community grant request process. And it really is, there's just something about this process that we seem to come back to every year. And in talking to Lauren, we haven't been able to track down exactly when it started and why it started, but my understanding, it definitely precedes my time on the board, was that it was an effort to say, hey, Carbondale runs a lot of the good things that happen here run on the backs of the nonprofit community. And so it was an effort of the town government to say, we support the nonprofit community. The nonprofit community does a lot of things that otherwise might fall to the town government to do. So for a little bit of contribution, we can get a lot of results. I think, over time, though, the, the process, it's, I think Jessica Markham, our former clerk, did a great job of streamlining it and digitizing it, I think that's a huge improvement. And so I feel like our main goals tonight are just to see, do we want to change the amounts at all? Do we want to change the categories and the kind of questions that we ask people? Are we really using all that information? And then specifically, I think with special events, and that break between the regular funds and the rec funds, and how the special events work, there's always a few that we grant over the minimum or the maximum amount, and that's the part that kind of causes the most discomfort. And then Ross had put in a, an item about, you know, our recusal process, since we are all involved in various organizations. So those are kind of the issues to discuss, I think, but Lauren, what?
I just wanted to say one thing, Kevin and I did some research, and we got back to 2005, and it existed then, but, so we couldn't go back any farther to figure out exactly when it started. Two thousand five, yeah.
Anything you want to say about?
Just open to questions and discussion, mostly.
Thanks. Yeah, so where do we want to start? We used to not have any numbers. We just said, request whatever, and they were all over the place. And so we, we then, for a couple of years, we had this, like, a five hundred dollar option and a five thousand dollar option, basically. And we were trying to, I can't remember exactly how we broke it down, but we tried to give some guidance. Small, local nonprofits, kind of doing core work, could request five thousand, and larger nonprofits where they're really just trying to show the town supports them so that they can leverage that for other funds, go for the five hundred. That gradually, everybody seems to go for the five thousand, understandably. Yeah. And, you know, it's not a competitive grant program in the sense that, like, pretty much everybody gets something through our averaging process, but, you know, we're all familiar with grants, like the town applies for FMLD and whatever else, where it's like, you either get it or you don't. It's, it feels to me like we want to keep the basic structure in place and not make it super competitive, and kind of spread the wealth, but do we want to revisit any of those numbers?
Can I make a comment? But I'm sorry, I forgot to say it before.
No, this is...
About, um, the, it seems that we get more applicants every year. And the, at least if we take out the recreation, special events piece, we basically do it on, you know, it's one percent of our budget. But our budget goes up in ways, what we're spending money on, for example, thirteen percent increase in health insurance premiums, and the results of our salary survey, which, these, these are not, these are not level, level items. And it, it's just an idea that some of the staff and I were kicking around about how to make this a little more predictable, about how much money is available for those grants. If the point is that we want to basically increase the amount by what last year's amount would be worth today, right? To go up so that you have the same buying power with that money, then instead of just saying one percent, which in any one year might increase this amount by three percent, or ten percent, or twenty percent, I don't know if you would want to consider having it go up every year by whatever the Consumer Price Index is for the, the previous twelve months, or what have you. So it just seemed that there was sort of no rhyme or reason. And even though it was one percent, that one percent was based off of other cost increases that we have no control over. So, anyway, just food for thought, not to complicate it any more than it already is.
And I'm looking back at the memo that our former town clerk provided for us, doesn't have a date on it that I can find, but when we were reviewing these this past budget season, and we had a brief discussion, and Chris had brought up maybe limiting it to some of it, or a different amount for organizations headquartered in Carbondale. We talked about changing the amount limits, the allocation process. I actually think the allocation process works pretty well. The categories, I don't really pay a whole lot of attention to those, but I feel like at least it forces groups to say what they're doing. And then the overall goals, I think that's actually where we're the least clear. Maybe we can start there. I mean, and then, yeah, this, the recommendation from our former clerk... I mean, and then, yeah, this, the recommendation from our former clerk was to review this, which we're doing tonight and clarify guidelines. Um, separate recreation fund grants. Um, revise the allocation process like to consider these things. She did a whole outreach, collected some feedback, so those were done. Um, and the feedback was generally positive, group said the process was pretty straightforward and easy.
So maybe on the recreation one thought I've had, cause those are almost all over five thousand, right? Or is it just five point that is?
No, their, their park is over five thousand.
Yeah, so maybe those ones. Um, we don't cap at the five grand, cause that's, it seems to be where we were feeling kind of a little bit hung up on it. And so that could be one thing that we do, whereas it's, it's just like, it's a slightly, cause it's one percent of our rec sales.
Yeah, and is that, it seems like.
No?
I have no idea why, but it comes out of general fund and it doesn't appear to be linked to a percentage of anything.
In my mind, what we might do there is separate a category called special events. And then everything else, I mean, I think that this should all still fit in the one percent of our general fund. Um, that would squeeze the others, but I would think special events could request like up to ten thousand. There's a few that would request it.
What if there's a really cool new event and we wanna give the full thirty-five thousand to it?
Good, right?
If we don't say it's up to ten thousand dollars, we could just say like, there's nowhere in the community grant process that says everybody gets something, right? So we could just leave it really flexible.
But there's no discussion ever that it means generally that everyone's just making a siloed decision. And in general, people just may take a percentage of whatever is asked. And so people asking for the moon get more than people asking for a normal amount.
And that's why we put a number in there, cause it didn't used to have a number and so like, I mean Gavin at Katie and Kay figured it out one year. He just doubled his request year after year for a few years from like, one thousand, what if I asked for two, what if I asked for four, what if, and literally. And we just kept giving him, you know, ninety percent of whatever he was asking for, and suddenly it was out of whack. And we said, all right, we gotta give people some kinda target. But I hear you that maybe there's something like if we wanted to really go in on Music in the Park. Yeah, it's like we, maybe we need to have a discussion about the special events specifically, and there's a certain amount allocated to those.
Well, and I think that would be a good idea because some of the special events, like five point is dealt with sort of differently. We give them a grant, but they give it right back to us in rent for the building. So it's our way of not charging them for the rec center. Right, which is different from Music in the Park. Um, or Mount Sobres Music Festival, or I don't remember what the other ones are in that category.
So we basically just pay the rec center out of our, uh, general fund for five point to use the building. Is that what you're telling me?
And I like the idea of keeping this fairly, fairly similar to how we're doing it, cause I think overall it's working. Leaving the amount at five thousand for the general requests and making it ten thousand for special events. Getting rid of the recreation category. I think that's one of the weird things. Is why there's this separate recreation category if that money's not coming from the recreation fund.
And is it, is it special events, isn't there also money in there for? Is that Nordic council or something is in that category?
They're always in the recreation category.
But they're not in the special events category.
But that would limit them to five thousand then, because that'd be in the regular, and that's.
What do we normally give them?
Seven or eight.
Give it open?
For just in the regular, they're just with everybody else.
It just comes out of this rec. That isn't really rec.
I think everybody should be in the same fund and it should be seven grand.
And not do a separate.
First year I thought the process was, I mean, I thought it was pretty good, cause we, we, we do grants and stuff at the college. But the only thing that still confused me is special events. Like when I went through it, I was like, okay, everything makes sense, nonprofits, we have this number. But my question is, the one percent that we take out of the general fund. That's, that's also including the special events, or do these special events get taken out of the rec? But I'm still confused about that.
Nothing gets taken out of the rec sales and use tax fund. Although we thought it did.
I feel like the one percent.
So it's under recreation.
That's how I saw it. That, that was the only thing that was, I like everything how it was, I think Jess, Jessica did a great job. It's just that special events confused me.
Well, there is this whole section of recreation that is part of that other piece. And that's where, um, the Nordic council is and Aspen. Valley Ski Snowboard Club and.
Why? If it's not. I wonder if originally it was.
I mean, the, the scale is about one percent of the rec fund, right? Is about three point five million, and it was thirty-five thousand. So I, I feel like we just stopped transferring the funds out of there at some.
At some point, look, quite some.
Or maybe it was just based on whatever one, that was just where that number came from.
Right, exactly, and maybe it never came from there, but.
I guess, yeah, I guess the perception has been that it's restricted to recreation and special events because it is rec use funds.
Which makes sense.
May have been spoken for entirely with bonds and stuff. When they were considering this too, so they might've just said, well, we're.
We'll just use the general.
Use general funds for that.
And I wouldn't be surprised if the one percent to nonprofits preceded the half cent recreation sales and use tax. And then when they.
Very good point.
Added that, maybe the board at the time and staff at the time said, oh, we should add another, we should add a one percent of this new revenue source also. And we should do just rec. I mean, we may end up saying it's fine the way it is, and like, we've kind of had this discussion before.
Um, and the budget did have, it has like a fifty thousand dollar line item for events for the rec department, right? And we don't spend all that necessarily, right?
No, we do spend that, but I don't remember what the other.
It's usually the, where my. Where my peeps at?
That cannot be a fifty thousand dollar event.
It's not a, it's not a recreation event. It's something else that comes out of that same line item. And I don't remember what it is right now, but I can send it to you tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, that just did jump out, uh, jump out at me in the budget process and I didn't really go after it. But there was just like a fifty thousand dollar line item and I'm like, well, a little detail might be nice in that.
Another event that takes up the rest of it.
Andrea, did you wanna share some thoughts on this topic? We'd love for you to. Come on up, you can sit with us, you can stand, you can do whatever you like. This is a work session, it's pretty informal. Everybody knows Andrea, I'm assuming.
Thank you. Hi, Andrea, Carbondale Chamber, just a couple of thoughts I had, um, cause we've been applying for this grant. Um, for a number of years, I've been with the chamber since oh eight, so I know you have that previous to that date. But, um, it's definitely been in effect since then. A couple of things just to throw out, maybe to consider too is. Um, even earlier discussions in tonight's meeting about compostable products and going green. And I think different things of, I think just to keep that in mind when you're allocating some of these funds, if you're open to that. Again, keeping in mind compostable materials, but also security. Um, and again, going back to sales tax and, um, some of these larger events that are generating more sales tax. Potentially that would be something that, um, they could possibly get additional funding for. Um, again, all of these, I think are, it's, we're so fortunate to have this in our community. That all of these people that apply for the grant funds are all very important programs. But just thinking again, if there's some type of threshold, um, again, just most recently when Carbondale Chamber. Was overseeing First Friday. In my humble opinion, we really paid back that grant, just because of all of the outreach and the sales tax that was generated anecdotally through those events. So that would be something to consider, um, again, in some type of criteria, keeping it simple from the applicant's perspective. And then also for those, um, that are reviewing the app, applications, but just if they are contributing more to the sales tax. It's kind of replenishing the coffers, I think would be important. And then again, um, just in costs, increased costs with security and other, um, expenses. Going in line with, um, our initiatives as a community, I think is important to also consider. But I think, you know, overall, just from an applicant that has applied, I think the process is pretty easy. Um, there's some questions, you know, it's a little different from the chamber perspective when we would apply from First Friday of like, how does this? Pertain to us, but I think it was, you know, pretty relative and. You know, keeping it simple across the board with the variety of people that and organizations that were applying, I do think it's very helpful. We find right now, again, we have four hundred eighty chamber members and people still are having a hard time just keeping like programming going. So I think anything you're able to offer would be very appreciative from the business and the nonprofit. But, um, yeah, happy to add other comments too, but those are just kind of a few things I had, um, top of mind.
Thanks Andrea. And, you know, one thing I've found in my role, uh, is tough every budget season is that there's groups. And I'm thinking like the chamber that get funding from us in other line items, right? Like the, we do the pass through of all of our, um, lodging tax to the chamber, and that's our main contribution for economic development. And there's always other groups who wanna like skip this process. And can they just apply and come before us and request money? And I've been just saying no, like this is your process unless it's. And then economic development is the one other realm where I could see a rationale to say. Do we wanna consider, you know, opening that door a little bit wider and do special events fit into that? Kind of to Andrea's point that some of these events, they bring people in, they spend their money here, it contributes sales tax. Um, but I appreciate the community grant program and think it should be a large enough amount. So maybe Chris's suggestion of going up seven thousand or something like that might be part of that, that, um. I just tell people, this is your option. If you wanna be in our budget, it is through this unless it's economic development. And like we did the co-venture, we helped them get started, but it was for three years and it was outside of this. Red Hill Council this year asked like, can we apply for money outside of this? And we realized, well, they haven't even been applying to this, so they applied to this and they got their five thousand dollars and I think they were fairly content with that. Um, so I ju, I guess my point is, I, I do think of economic development as a little bit separate, I agree with Andrea there. Um, and I wanna keep this process like robust enough and meaningful enough. That we can direct everybody here. And not end up with, oh, because like even like Mount Sobres Nordic Council, like I think what they do is super important. But I don't wanna do it outside of this process, because then it's really hard to say where you draw that line.
Yeah, I'd be inclined to limit the economic development thing just to the existing chamber situation for that reason of sort of like, where's the?
Well, we do Carbondale Arts and Creative District under that now too, right? We did Creative District outside of this. So it's like when a group feels like it needs and deserves for what they contribute to the community. More than whatever our set amount here is, we get these requests to be outside of this process. And they're, they're hard to say no to, right? Like these are our core groups, it's not like people that we don't wanna support and work that's not meaningful, so. But I, just so you know, like I have multiple conversations every year where I'm telling people, no. You cannot apply in any other way other than this process. And, you know, each one is with somebody that I really like and doing work that I support, so. Other thoughts on where we go from here? There's kind of the overall annual amount, um, of the one percent from each fund. And whether we wanna start getting that from the rec fund or not, um, there's how we deal with special events. These are all just sort of the questions on the table. There's the, the max amount, whether it's for special events or other things. And then we haven't even gotten into our little, our process and recusals, but I think we can, that's pretty straightforward at the end.
I, in the memo, it says add events category with funding from bag fee fund for waste diversion. I mean, maybe we try that this year. And have a certain amount from the bag fee fund that you can apply for through the community grants program. But would you be able to apply for that and your?
I was gonna say yes.
You could just say like, but we're not gonna oversee how they spend the money, right? So they could come to us and say like, I don't wanna give them two pots. If we're not gonna monitor what, that they're actually using it for waste diversion.
Other thoughts?
Along those lines are the, is, and this might be a follow-up meeting on the tobacco tax funds. And, cause we had that.
Grant program for tobacco tax funds.
And how we wanna allocate those, and, and maybe we just need to have a separate conversation where we just look at those amounts, what the money's gone to. And then, um, yeah, what we.
Those are now through the school district directly though, right? Basically.
But they don't, they're not doing a grant program this year, so they're using all of that money towards school-based mental health. Then they've done it for the past couple of years.
And so those, did those, Andrea, show up in the requests again then of the general?
I, it was unclear. Yeah, for like, uh, youth zone.
They were back in the community grant requests.
I think some of them were, but there's a very big difference. They were getting, you know, tens of thousands of dollars through the school district. And they're not getting that through our community grant fund, so.
But that could be a follow-up meeting or just an update on what that amount's looking like.
So maybe let's start at the top then, do we wanna keep it at the one percent of the general fund and one percent of the rec fund? The historic kind of appropriation. Or do we, I mean, staff is suggesting you could say, well, this year it was hundred and twenty-one thousand. And we could say that goes up by CPI every year or by, you know, some other number. Like our budget jumped twenty percent a couple of years ago.
What if the budget drops thirty percent? Yeah, but that, but if we don't, if we say we're gonna go by CPI, the CPI could only go down, like it could go down. But it could only go down two percent and then we're still giving out a hundred thousand dollars a year. And then that ends up being two percent of our budget, if our budget drops. You see what I'm saying?
And to Lauren's point, like sometimes, you know, our budget might, our revenue might only increase five percent. But our health insurance costs and employee staffing costs might increase ten percent. We're trying to squeeze all that in there.
Is it based on expenses or income?
I mean, this is based on the.
The expenses.
Cause could you base it on income instead of expenses or?
We have to get Greg's take on that.
Yeah, I feel like it's, we take, we have our projected revenue, right? Where we said this year, like we think we're gonna go up by one percent in sales tax and then our CFO says, here's your projected revenue. I think it's one percent of that, but maybe I'm wrong. Cause like this year we spent more than that, we're doing some deficit spending for some one-time capital stuff. I assume that that doesn't boost this. General fund.
We back those out of the expenses too, we're talking about fund balances and all of that.
I'm not hearing anybody propose big changes to the one percent from each fund. Do we wanna look into actually getting the one percent from the rec fund for the rec stuff?
Is this the year to do that?
I thought we were getting rid of the rec distinction altogether.
Love looking at that fund. I don't think this is the year to do that.
Well, but you're not, could you define whether or not you're talking about rec things in this grant program or the special events?
I was saying.
Because the rec category has been just part of the regular list. But then there's that separate special events piece, that thirty-five thousand.
But that's.
Coming out of the rec fund, what?
That thirty-five thousand is what you're talking about, right? And it says it's recs, recreation allocation totals.
Yeah, like here I have recreation and special events total up to thirty-five thousand dollars. But it's this separate thing.
Yeah, I thought my understanding was it that the recreation and special events things had all, had historically all been in a category together. And then everything else was in a category together. So in this case, I think we would be.
Oh, okay, alright. I said corrected.
So do we wanna change that? I think the only thing that feels weird about that is, it feels like we're really tight on the nonprofit. we're really tight on the nonprofits at the top, the general fund. And then suddenly you feel like, oh, I've got thirty-five thousand dollars spent and I've only got four requests here, like.
Yeah, AVSC is like, you know, a huge organization getting a big check from us. I mean, they do great work and they do, they contribute a lot to, backed, I think, to Spring Gulch in a lot of ways, but but they are an Aspen organization that has a, you know, million dollar ski race or whatever. So I don't know.
But yeah, we could, because that money's, if that money's not coming from the rec fund, it does seem strange to separate it out.
Yeah, like why?
I think they just play in the same pool with each other.
I agree.
Hey, all the money goes in it too.
So then do you break out special events?
And do you even do the one percent from the rec?
Seems like special events, there's already precedent, more precedent for breaking it out, both in the discussion of the bag fee stuff as well as First Friday. And I do feel like that stuff also does have a stronger argument to become out of the rec fund directly too, I think.
And you get a better ROI for the town. Like you're, the town, special events are bringing people to the town. They're creating sales tax, income.
Yeah, maybe we do create a category
That's special events.
Economic development, special events or something.
I think keeping it as special events is a little more solid than saying economic development, because then you could say, like any business could say, well, I need five grand for economic development.
So a special events, I mean, we already have it as a category. The question is, do we treat it any different?
And do we take it out of the rec fund? I say, I say we should take special events out of the rec fund and I don't, I think this is a good year to do it too because
I just think it might not be a good year to do it.
We were already saying we're gonna transfer some general funds out back from the rec center. I don't know, I think one percent would be fine and keep it special events.
I would be, uh, yeah, I think I would keep it special events and open it up to a wider range, I guess. It seems like the special events have been under sporting rec special events. I don't know wh- why necessarily, but.
The Mount Silver's Music Festival.
Oh yeah.
The Music in the Park. Five Point and the Family Block Party. Those are the only four. Everything else is in that other bucket.
I kind of, what if, if we just went with Chris's idea of lumping everybody together? Not having a separate special events, anything and upping the limit. Does anyone get more than seven? Five points.
I mean, Five Point
Five Point and, uh, Music in the Park has gotten more than seven.
Yeah, and we had that whole conversation about whether we wanna, you know, it was a little late in the process, but it is like suddenly it'll be late in the process again.
Well, we can always go less than. What if we went to eight? Your limit is eight thousand.
You still have to use your discretion as a trust to decide who gets what. You still have to fit under the cap.
And so Five Points only gets eight. It seems a little more equitable to me. If, if Five Points and like all those, it's just a community grant process.
Special events into like the nonprofit stuff. I don't know. I feel separate, special events should be separate.
Like have a separate amount that's designated that we split between the special events.
And is that amount, is that, then is that amount like thirty-five? And you take the other ones that were in the, like AVSC was in that thirty-five, right?
Well, they were.
Yeah, that's what my question is.
Yeah, and I truly think the special events that I just saw from this year were, um, the Five Point Film Festival, the Carbondale Family Block Party, Mount Silver's Music Festival and Second Sunday Concert.
What other events can we conceive of that would conceivably apply for that category?
I really think the bigger question is, do we wanna make the Music in the Park a bigger thing? You know, like we were talking about a week or two ago. Um, and if so, we're gonna have to contribute most of that to that. Five Points has made a case that we should support them more, um, that they are a major economic, you know, driver. That event and the kind of notoriety or whatever it gives Carbondale. And so that's why they put in a request for fifteen thousand this year, even though it says the limit's five.
What did we give them?
Uh, I don't, I, I have my sheet.
Ninety-nine seventeen.
We gave them almost ten.
The discomfort is where we, we set a limit, people request more than that and then we rationalize it and we give them more. And that's what I think we wanna avoid.
Is there a way to take Five Points out of the community grant process and just say like, we're just not gonna charge you rent?
Yeah, we could. I mean, that's
I think that might be a, I, I think they did that for, for accounting reasons for the auditors. But I would have to check on that. Because that was, that was my first take. It's like, why are we doing this? Doesn't seem like, you know, a lot of work to just
Trade checks.
You know, but, um, but it may very well be that the auditors flagged it and that's the way we solved it. I don't know, I'll find out.
And we do a separate, um, allocation for First Friday that's in the economic development line.
Outside of the community grant.
Outside of the community grant process. It's like
That's fifteen thousand dollars.
Chamber, Creative District and First Friday are these three separate things under economic development. And then they don't apply through this.
And the Family Block Party is CARE making that? Are they the ones behind that?
I think so.
Yeah, I think, I believe so.
And they're not applying separately? That's their application?
And they got thirty-five, a hundred, almost thirty-six hundred.
For the Family Block Party, yeah.
And what's the difference between the Mount, the Mount Silver's Music Festival and the Second Sunday Concerts?
Silver's Music Festival is part of a First Friday.
But it's the same organizers, right?
Yep, same organizers, but
And it's in Sports Street Plaza instead of Silver's Park.
I mean, one way to do it, it, it does seem like special events, it's not an unlimited number of them. I appreciate that question. It's like, we're only talking about a couple of things here. Um, but we could look at all those as economic development and fund them through our economic development line item. I mean, we already do First Friday under that. And we could say Five Points gets a certain amount and, um, Music in the Park.
I just think then, then we have to, I mean, I, I wouldn't wanna, then they'd have to come and talk to us. And that's just like a, a thing we skip with this. By being like, no, just, just apply through.
Well, then what, you know, how do you, what happens when there's another special event that comes in and says, well, we're an economic development driver and how come we have to?
Why do we have to go through the grant process and these guys get to come in front of you for a special meeting?
Or why can't we just come in front of you?
And yeah, again, I think if we wanna get serious about the Music in the Park, it's gonna have to be more than ten thousand dollars. So then it's gonna have to exist outside this somehow. It's already, like, doesn't really fit.
But I don't think that would be, I don't think that would be in this, because I think that would be the town contracting with someone to put that on. So I don't think it would be part of this grant. They wouldn't be applying for it. We would be saying, we have this much money, we want to hire someone to do this for the town. I think that's, I think it's, it wouldn't fit, really fit in here, I don't think.
So if we do that, then they probably won't be a special event. Is that what you're saying? So then now we're going down to
That feels better to me to just I don't know. Yeah, I don't know.
But then what do we do with Five Points?
I still feel I like your idea of figuring out how to just not charge them rent.
Sorry, I just, one thing, you know, from the Chamber perspective of like what we do for one member, we have to be able to replicate for the other four hundred and seventy-nine members. And so I just am curious, like what if someone else comes in or what if there's another local nonprofit that also pays rent to the rec center? What if they come forward and say like, wait, can we get our
Fashion show.
Rent paid. So I just caution
You'll see them next week.
Yeah, so that just
And they just pay the fee.
So I just am curious about that and maybe it's another term and I'm happy to help brainstorm too. Maybe it's not like an economic development term. You know, that can sometimes be a scary term. But maybe it's something, and maybe there is some additional criteria around like what makes it economic development? Like, yes, they are contributing additional sales tax dollars. This amount of, number of people are coming in, but also are they contributing to the lodging tax?
And like the Music in the Park wouldn't qualify under any of that, cause it's intentionally a very quiet locals thing. I keep coming back to, I feel like a fairly easy way forward, cause it's late and we're feeling stuck, is if we let special events go up to ten thousand, if we let the others go up to, pick a number.
Seven.
Seven. And then maybe we look at the categories for a minute. Because the categories, maybe they don't really matter, but they don't make a whole heck of a lot of sense to me when I look at the
They don't have any bearing on the process at all, do they? They're just
They don't.
Just organize it in our minds in the spreadsheet, basically.
Exactly, right, because we don't
Even the rec ones, they all come in from the general fund anyway, so I think that if I had to guess, I would say that the categories were probably just put together to group like organizations together so that they could be more easily analyzed, um, by the board.
Well, especially, cause we used to get them, you know, in a PDF of like, okay, here's all the, um, mental health organizations applications in this PDF. So yeah, it was kind of for organizational purposes.
So right now, we don't have in the list of categories, we don't have special events. It ends up saying that on our, like in the memo for tonight, in paragraph two, it says they're organized into eight categories. And I just feel like those are, they blur together in my mind. I don't know what the perfect categories would be and I agree with everybody. It doesn't really matter on some level, but right now I feel like we have eight, like cultural, recreational and educational treasures. That's a weird category. Regional collaboration, that's
Drop the category.
That's a weird category.
I mean, I just feel like special events was really the only separate category, but then everything else
I mean, maybe it's just local nonprofit or special event. And special event still has to be a nonprofit, but we're either supporting you as a nonprofit or
Or your event, yeah.
And then we eliminate the line between recreation and everything else. Do we still use the equivalent of one percent of the rec fund, even though it's not coming from the rec fund?
Yeah, but it, it all goes into whatever, because it's not coming from the rec fund. If we take it from the rec fund, then we have to separate out the rec.
Not giving special events its own pot. It's fighting in the same pot. It's everything else. It's just
Have a higher limit.
Like that. Keeping up with us here, Patrick? Just to review then, we're eliminating all the categories except local nonprofits and special events. And the total is still one percent of revenue, projected revenues for general plus rec. But we're eliminating the dividing line. We're not having a category or a separate pool of funding for recreation. And the limit for all nonprofits is seven thousand dollars, except special events is ten thousand dollars. And I think continuing to put in the application, like we encourage, you know, larger nonprofits who are just trying to show town support, however that's worded at five hundred, maybe that could be a thousand. I mean, I don't know, maybe it's just still five hundred. I just don't know that anybody's following our guideline there. I'm out requested. As I go down it right now, yeah, it's, nobody
That's up to us. Maybe that's up to us to say like, AVSC doesn't really need seven. I don't know.
And in my mind, I always
For sure.
I always look at these and I think, is, is this organization doing something that's like a core town function that otherwise we might have to do? And so I look at like the safe house type stuff and, you know, all that, all that kinda stuff. And then I look at stuff that serves a small but really important population, the wind walkers and all that. And I'm like, that's awesome. But that's not something that we would otherwise have to do. And I just give them a little bit of money to say, we support you, but we're not like paying your bills over here. That's, that's, but then I look at like Thunder River and Katie and Kay and, you know, all those like, these are core parts of how this town works. And I give them the maximum. Okay. So I think we're good on that?
That was good.
Try to remember this, when August and September comes and we're like
We're writing it down.
Well, I mean, our, our intent behind it, because we'll get there and there'll be some that still
Colin and Ross are gonna have a completely opposite idea.
Recusals, uh, I think Ross makes a valid point that we're all involved in different nonprofits, so we could shift to, um, if you're involved in a nonprofit as a, you know, direct employee, board member, anything like that, you just can't put anything in that cell. And then it would just take a little bit of math to make it where that doesn't equal zero. Like that one's divided by six instead of seven. That's been the
That's been the main concern.
Maybe instead of blank, put recusal. Or like, so that we know, you know. Yeah, you have to calculate it differently.
But there wouldn't be very many of those. There'd be maximum probably of seven of the fifty or whatever it is.
And it's really only if you are getting paid by that organization that's receiving money. If you're on the board, you're not receiving a monetary benefit. Um, but it's been, but we have had where Luis was working at Five Point and
Dan and a Cindigo.
Dan and a Cindigo. And I feel like we had somebody else on the board.
Well, and Ross for his organization and Chris now working for Katie and Kay and, you know, like, that's, that's great. That's why we're all here.
I think you should just leave, not be able to put any dollars in it.
The fact that we're not having a discussion helps not really, you're not really tilting it toward anybody else.
Think it all on your own in a session.
Better make sure the math works, that it doesn't mean that we, that that recusal doesn't end up equaling a zero, in which case it brings the whole thing down.
Could we, Patrick, after this, like as part of our minutes or an update or something, could we just see kind of like, here's, here's what we proposed for the process next year as maybe taken out of the minutes as like a, a document, so that you can use that going forward and I think that that'd be, yeah, cheat sheet, so that Colin and, and Ross can see it, cause we might need to discuss it a little bit more.
Like maybe you put it in information only or
Yeah, something like that. Okay. Cool. Anything else on this topic?
Thanks, Ben.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Next year, next week, not next year, next week is, uh, not a huge, um, meeting. I mean, I think we've got time. If, I really would leave it to Aaron. If Aaron feels like he needs to bring anything else back to us to get guidance before he brings us the final building codes, next week's his opportunity. I think we did a nice job of giving guidance.
I have a quick question. If a board member has a strong opinion about something in the proposed code, when should we bring, do, do you want us to wait until we're getting ready to adopt the code to, to talk to the board about that?
It's a good que- I mean, along those lines, like
Let me talk to Aaron and see if, um,
You've already brought it up directly.
And I think there's a couple of things that the board will have strong opinions on and Aaron may not agree with us, where we will have to say like, no, this is what we want.
Okay. And maybe we just don't look at that final meeting as the final meeting. Maybe it's like, we need to see it all though.
What if you can see all that by, like, the first meeting in March? And that way there can be comments made. You could have that discussion and then what he can do is make whatever changes the board wants. And then come back with those changes.
Great. I just didn't want you to expect us to have an adopted, adoptable code and me say, hold on.
No, I think, I think that's a great question, Justin. I think we need to see the proposals and we need to feel free to make some revisions and edits to that.
And if there's public that has really strong feelings about things that wanna come in front of the board and not just send emails, that's the meeting to do it.
Okay. Yeah, so that's probably not next week realistically. Yeah, that's So maybe it's, yeah, that we get it all and we have a lot of time and we look at, we have a meeting on the twenty-fifth of March that's dedicated mostly to that topic or all to that topic. But we don't expect to vote on it that night. We expect to see it one more time.
The twenty-fifth of March is during spring break.
It is. It is. It's that.
I won't be here.
Who else won't be here during spring break?
I will be here this year.
I will not be. So I would really like to not have, and the, a lot of the public won't.
That's a bad time to do an adoption hearing. Which, thank you for saying that, just cause I didn't realize that that was spring break.
So please don't do it March twenty-fifth.
Okay, how about, uh.
We'll just have to look at it.
Yeah, that's fine. Just don't want it to be.
Nothing on April eighth, right?
Yeah, maybe it's April eighth, um, but it's still, I think we just do need to look at it as a two-meeting thing. Where there's a meeting with a lot of public comment, a lot of back and forth. And then there's another meeting where we see all the proposed revisions based on that. And maybe we make a couple last changes, but hopefully then we're ready to vote. But we're not gonna put ourselves in a position where we're like all disappointed that we didn't get to a vote on the one meeting where everybody's talking about this. Okay, so yeah, otherwise next week is a fairly light meeting. And just remember then we have the, um, March fourth. For the, uh. Town manager consultant selection. That'll be a short one. Yeah, yeah, it's just that first Tuesday of the month where we don't.
Every Tuesday for the first six months.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. You nailed it.